Okay, I think we're ready to get started for our October 22nd, 2018 Town Board Work Session, Continuation of the Budget That Never Ends. Oh no, this is the fifth and final presentation, is it not?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. And just so my fellow board members know, November 5th, following a short work session, we will be having further discussion on any of the budget items that has been, that have been presented to us to date. At that point, we'll give you our opportunity to, you know, talks amongst ourselves, ask questions, bring up whatever other things that we're thinking, point certain things out that we want, which will create a list then that will go back to our town manager based on what we have in that conversation, okay? With that, we've got, gosh, one, two, three, four, about six different folks presenting this evening, and the first one is our police with Chief Clement going to start us off.
Mayor, all fellow members, I'll be quick, I know it's gonna be a long night for everybody, so, the police department's budget, it does have some changes, but our goal is always to promote safety and security for the community. We try to be very visible and highly active in the community, and provide a safe environment for all the events that take place in the community. We try to engage the schools in the community as much as possible where available. Windsor was awarded the safest city by Safe Wise. Now that is, again, is the numbers that are come up through a study using FBI numbers. There are a lot of ways to use numbers that we all know. So, we take that with pride, but also understand that there's a lot of work to be done throughout the community and as we move forward with all the challenges ahead. We have 27 square miles of jurisdiction. Windsor is one of the larger jurisdictions of communities that are comparable size or that we use. Four Collins, of course, and Greedy are much larger, but Windsor has a unique setup as our boundaries are concerned. We have areas of population and growth that draw us to the far reaches of our community and stretch our resources then at times. We have a population, as Scott has advised, about 30,000 and growing. Our staff size is 34 sworn officers. If you use the federal numbers, we should be at a number of 54. By the stands, there's always ways to look at that and to examine it. Per officer is one, there's other considerations. We have to use a blend of many things because of our size of jurisdiction and the unique characters of our community. We have six non-sworn, that includes our CSOs and our front office staff that help out. Six crossing guards are part-time, and if anybody can find a way of having the school district take that over, I'll buy you lunch for a year. We have 24 of our seventh staffing, which means that there's always police officers on duty, so oftentimes, our staff is, in comparison, is twice as large as others because we are here 24 hours a day. Our mission is to make a difference every day, and we try to focus on community policing whenever possible. These are just two photos from recent events that we were actively engaged in.
Chief?
Yes?
What is community policing?
It's a philosophy of law enforcement to basically engage the community on problem solving in a variety of areas, to not just dictate what takes place, but to have an active engagement with the community as to what's going on. So if we have a problem in a certain area, you want to examine it, brainstorm, come up with an idea, attack it, and then go back and reassess it. And so it's really highly engaged with community involvement, because honestly, we could put the police officer on every corner of every street, and we would still not have a community about crime. So the best way to obtain that is to work in hand-to-hand with the community as much as possible.
Because I've heard that before from all over the place.
Yes, it's a, I would say that Windsor has always been on the forefront of community policing, basically because of our size and our need to be, to succeed, as we've had to by the mere nature of our jobs is to enlist the aid and the assistance in the community.
Chief?
Yes, sir, David.
When I look at those additions, well, two slides ago, so you were talking about 34 sworn officers, and the federal ratios would suggest 54. How many of these staff add positions are sworn officers?
Oh, we're coming to?
The ones you referenced in your 2018 list?
Oh, I'll get to those in a second. The, we, yeah. Okay, here, sworn, the community service officer is non-sworn, the SR is sworn, in 2018?
Yeah.
Okay. The resource officer and the traffic safety team, the two people from there are sworn.
So they're in that number then? The third, these are?
Yes, they're all included in that number. These are all, the only thing that is not a number here is if you look at the warrant service team, that is a team comprised of officers within, it wasn't an additional hire, it's just an assignment that was, we passed on to some of the officers.
Okay, thank you.
So, with, in 18, we added the community service officer, school resource officer, property evidence tech. They've been very, very successful. Officer Stanger, who is with the school district, does a wonderful job and is, I constantly receive compliments for his engagement with the students and forming relationships to stave off some of the problems that can occur in that environment. The property evidence tech, Amanda Griffin, she does a wonderful job in her tasks and toils of trying to move our property evidence room into a 21st century environment. Here's some activity numbers comparing 2018 to 2017, 2018. They're from September of each year, so as not to have one out of skew. You can see where some of these are fairly high in increases. The 53% increase in obstruction with police officers is something that's very unique to Windsor. We haven't had that for a long time, where there's so much resisted interaction with people, you take them into custody or interactions with them. And you can see it's, nationwide, I noted here, there's been 50 officers killed in line of duty. That number is actually higher, closer to 80 at this point, and if you take all officer's deaths, it's almost 200 at this point a year to date. Some of the things that are down, you look at DUI, welfare checks, theft and robbery. Robbery's, the only one here that we really have a huge control over, and that would be DUI, and I look for that number to change with the work of the traffic safety team. That number will go in the other direction as we move forward. Total citations are, of course, are up 6%, and total calls for service are up 20% year to date, so. And that probably will also change as we move forward into latter half of the year because we get into, we often call silly season with the holidays and stuff, the calls seem to increase at a higher rate.
Did you say DUIs would go up with more traffic enforcement?
Yeah, traffic safety.
Just to make sure, because I was looking at prior data in the CAPR, and there was a significant increase in calls for service from 16 to 17, and you had noted in that report that it was a change in simply data recording methods.
Yeah, we're actually moving forward to where our numbers will be comparable to each year.
Yes, so 17, 18 is using the same method.
Same method, yeah.
Thank you.
These staffing requests, the ones that I think Shane shared with you at earlier meetings, record clerk up front, with the staff, we have records and admin people do a ton of work, and they're doing probably much more than they can take on. In fact, is a lot of the administrative stuff that they should be doing is being passed off to lieutenants and sergeants and myself, so it's highly needed in that position. In addition, the four officers, an investigator or detective to be added for the purpose, where currently our investigators are handling, I think, 13 active sex assaults. Those are very in-depth cases, they take a lot, plus the other cases they're handling. We wanted to add on another community service officer. CSO is an excellent position that affords us the ability to have someone handling a lot of the lower level crimes and reports without having to take up the time of an officer. We'd like to also convert our existing code to a CSO, which basically means is our code and CSO are classified as the same job description, same pay grade, it's all equal. Difference is the code officer does, can do less than a CSO can, so a CSO gives us more flexibility and more ability to be adaptable to situations. And of course, an additional school resource officer would be coshed with the RE4 if approved, and that would start mid-year, so that would be just with the school district and not with the charter, the charter's going with it, their own private security. We'd like to sponsor a person academy if this is feasible. One of the problems we have moving forward is finding capable and adequate patrolmen and women. It's a very tough job market out there to find people for your system. You're constantly turning over people, departments constantly rob officers from each other in an effort to find the best. So if we have the ability to sponsor an officer, which most agencies are going to now, we would do that at Flat Rock. It would be a three-year contract for the person hired. If they left before the three years, they'd have to pay back their prorated paces, let that contract back to the town. If we don't select somebody for this position, it would not be used. In 2019, we're changing our schedule. Right now, we have, we have workshops, work of 10-hour days, we're rotating days on and off, which basically in our current schedule gives officers two weekends off a month, which is a very positive for the officers, but the negative side is it's difficult to maintain supervision because they're shifting in and out from supervisors, and it's difficult for the sharing of communications. If we need to backfill shifts due to schools, training, sickness, it's more difficult to do so with the current schedule. We're going to, in 2019, a fixed schedule, still 10-hour days, but it'll be four on and three off. Posits better lines of communication with supervisors and the people that are supervised, it's strong communications, or easier to maintain, increases opportunity for training. With the department will give us two extra training days, available training days a month for that purpose. And the negative side is you have early week training schedule where you need to adjust officers' time or change the training time to accommodate for the people getting off of midnight shift. But we're going to add a stipend for the three positions, acting supervisor, a FTO stipend, and for on-call for the detective. Reference to the supervisors, it'll provide us with supervision when sergeants or lieutenants are not available, and primarily you're looking at a time from 4:00 to, you know, 3:00 to 6:00 in the morning where this will, they'll be in place. They will not be doing evaluations, but they'll be there to provide that supervision if needed during those hours. The FTO's duty is one of the most arduous events a person can take as an officer. It's a lot of responsibility. You're acting as a supervisor and a trainer, so this is one of the most common stipends in the industry is to subsidize the training officer with the stipend, or actually, some places an extra pay. And the last one, the on-call detective, this really basically breaks down to if a call comes in at 2:00 in the morning, in need of an investigator, who can they get? The way we currently do it, it's just an ad hoc. This here will put somebody on call, so if we have a situation after hours, weekends, there will be a detective that is able to, will respond and handle a case. These are all reflected in the overtime budget, yes?
So are these just, maybe we need this, you're putting in a case, or is this something they get and that's it, as part of their salary?
No, you would, as needed.
As needed, yes.
So, the acting supervisor would be, if somebody's serving in that role as an acting supervisor, and we've identified two people that serve that role for the time being, and it'd probably be something we'd address again in 2020 as to what, how to fulfill that, and it should be a, promote somebody to that position full-time and take away the acting supervisor or leave it in place.
So is that if a supervisor leaves, we have an acting one?
Yes.
So it may not be needed?
It may not be, yes.
Well, and again, the cover gap that we have is really with our sergeants, and it's just kind of in the middle of the night, we just have these times when we really don't have, because we have five or six sergeants?
We have four patrol, four patrols.
Four patrols, so they just can't cover all the shifts and all the hours, so we do have times when we really need to identify.
About four hours a night.
So it's just identifying, you know, more of the senior patrol that haven't promoted sergeant yet, but probably demonstrate those leadership capabilities and just giving them that official designation.
I guess that one, I almost asked the same question because it's done all clear to me. So the, you've budgeted anticipating you'll probably need these services during the year, and if you do, a person acting in that capacity would get a bump.
Yes.
But if they don't, if you get through the year?
Well, the one where we'd be the easiest to, where we'll be most flexible would be the FTO. If you don't have somebody in training, you don't have, there's no stipend, so it's not that a trained officer receives that money regardless of training, it's only when he has a trainee with him and he's actually performing that, performing that task. Some of the capital expenses for next year, and a look with a radio tower, with a joint venture with Weld County, Windsor Severance Fire District, Windsor's cost of building this is actually, it's not 177, it's 175,909, I know 166. It's, I, that's a, that last seven should be a five, so you'll see that number later date tonight. There's also an annual maintenance cost for that tower site, which would be, at this point, about $2,300 a month, or I mean, a year, I'm sorry, to maintain that, and that is a contract that the county has with Wireless Motorola, and they will, if that changes, it would change as a factor of the contract with the county and Motorola changing, so it's likely that sometime in that tenure period, their contract with Motorola will be renewed, renegotiated, and that contract, that amount may go up or may go down, but depends on that contract. This is for a tower that'll be at Kenner Road 15 and Highway 14, just north of Highway 14 there, that'll cover the west part of town, and for the purpose of alleviating our shortage and poor communications that take place out there, both for us and for the fire district.
I thought that that was already up there. I thought there was a tower.
The tower is, the county bought that tower from AT&amp;T, or the last owners, it's used to be an old AT&amp;T tower site, so the county purchased it along with a tower site out in the Grover area, and so this is to rebuild that, that site and to put up a new Less lethal equipment, something that's unfortunately is becoming more and more of a necessity in, talking to people. This is a Taser, it's an X-26, it's what an officer carries, is one of the less lethal tools that the carrier underbuilt. It is only effective for between 21 and 25 feet, and oftentimes, in situations involving weapons or standoffs, it's highly inadequate. What we're looking to add here is what they call two less lethal shotguns, basically they shoot big, vague rounds at people when necessary, and they're less lethal. There's always a possibility with any use of force that it can be lethal, but the object is to not use it if you don't have to. Any other is to, the pepperball rounds that we need for the pepperball gun that we have to deploy. Equipment for the set team, CTs, camera equipment, bins, packaging, and materials as such, and then, we need to replace all of our radios as we move forward. Current, the current radios that officers carry are X-20, are the 2500s, those are no longer under contract for repair with Motorola. I discussed this with the previous town manager, that we would start a recycling out replacement process as we move forward. Within the next few years of 2021, we have to be on new radios, pack sets and car radios because the county is changing its radio system, and our current radios won't work at all. They'll be obsolete to function, so we're in the process. So anytime now that we purchase a new radio, whether a car or a pack set, we purchase it with, for the future, so it has, yes, sir?
So I assume this is a partial replacement?
Yes, it's just a partial.
What percent of the?
It's about, each pack set will run, depending on what happens, Motorola price at the time, between $3,500 and $4,500 a pack set, so.
So I'm sorry, so you're planning on, you make me do the math, $3,500 into $12,000?
Yeah, it's basically replacing three next year.
How many total units are in that?
33, pack sets. Well, I take the back, we already have some that are not, don't, do not need to be replaced, and some of the new ones we purchased are already capable, have what they call a dime chip in it, which will meet the new system needs.
So it sounds like the site will be significantly larger in the next two years?
Well, we'll probably, we'll probably be adding about the same amount each year, and hopefully it won't be too bad, because I think we have enough to get us where we need to by 2021. So, there's enough, I think there's enough pack sets in our current system that are adequate for us to make a transition. Taser replacements, as I just pointed out, the unfortunate part about these things, they have a very short lifespan. They, I can buy three handguns for the cost of one Taser, and they are obsolete. This is, this version, the X-26, is no longer serviceable by Axon, who is the parent company for Taser, so when it goes out, if it's not repairable, we have to, basically goes to recycle bin. It's no longer functional, so as we purchase now, we have to purchase the new generation of Taser in there, and they're about $1,200 a Taser.
Yeah, we're not really going to recycle then, right?
No.
Okay.
Hey Chief?
Yes, sir.
When, a Taser has to be deployed and it leaves the little thing embedded, you know, doesn't it, leaves it embedded in the individual?
Yeah, it's two number six fish hooks.
Wow. Does, what does that cost? What's the cost?
The Taser cartridge is $50, about $50 a cartridge. And so what we do with cartridges, they're in our, part of our ammo, equipment replacement cycle is, we purchase, every year you have to qualify with three cartridges, so the officers, they use the cartridges they have, and they're issued new ones each year. A dummy cartridge or a practice cartridge that some places you can use will cost you $25 a cartridge versus the, a one we use is 48. The problem with going with the, they have a little plastic window on it that breaks away when you discharge the Taser. Those oftentimes become damaged and break and are obsolete in the middle of the year, so we hold those over for training purposes, so we don't have to issue extra cartridges. Of course, there's office equipment, vest replacement, which is an ongoing cycle with vests. Office equipment, a couple of versa desks for the, standup desk for the ladies up front to work. We have, hopefully, a new employee with a new records person, there'll be some additional equipment there. And then the property evidence room, Amanda needs a few things, and actually, something we probably should have years ago was an upright freezer rather than the chest freezer. With a chest freezer, all the evidence is stacked upon itself, so you have the ability to damage or contaminate other, older evidence that's placed on the bottom, so an upright freezer will be used to replace that to make it more secure. And of course, a trash compactor, a desk, or a cart, and they can vacuum. We don't, we try not to allow people in the back into the evidence room that aren't badged or they have to sign in, so even if I go into the evidence room, I have to sign in the date, the time, and the error, and when I leave. So we try to limit the number of people who have access to the evidence room. Now the megaphones, this is a request from sergeants, and it's for special events, and it came about apart, about, because of a couple incidents at the Orbach Park where officers had to try to make notifications to public and the inter, and the, the intercom and our cars wouldn't work, just the people right close by right here, so this would be a function, would be in sergeant's vehicles for use on special events or for as needed Also in 2019, one of the things we'd like to add is a cleaning allowance for clothing. This is something that is standard with our, with our competition in this area for dry cleaning. Lexipol, which is a policy management system run by Gordon Grand out of California, is up to date, it's standardized each state as far as policies for police departments. It's, one of the things that's, it's kept up to date with the all changes in legislation that come about all the time, and it makes sure that you're, it's always legally defensible, so we're moving forward in that direction. And a training, we'd like to have at least $1,000 for our current staffing to attain training for an officer. Some of the trains we have, it's $1,000 just to get to the class, let alone the incidentals that are there associated with it. This last one here, Weld County Communications, this is an annual fee, it started, I want to say maybe eight years ago, and they started passing on the cost of dispatching to individual agencies around the county. It's based on charges, radio usage. Last year, our cost was $62,256, this year it's going to be up to 75, 2019, it's going to be up to $75,680. There will be one more increase the following year, and then it's supposed to be stabilized. We are looking at going at, the countywide, going to silent dispatching, which means that dispatchers will send low priority calls directly to the MBT of an officer without calling on the radio. If it works out, it may lower that cost, but it's too early to tell how that'll take place, but it's one of the things that they are working forward to.
Chief, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What's the current, we're adding the cleaning allowance there, what's the current MO of the staff or officers for their uniforms?
We purchased the uniform, there is no cleaning, they have to clean it themselves. Some take it to a dry cleaner, some don't, some wash and dry, but there's an increasing number that take it to a dry cleaners. And this amount is, was Lieutenant Dogg actually was in conversation with one of the local cleaners to come up with that price.
Chief?
Yes?
The Lexipol, assuming that is customized to Colorado laws?
Yes.
And is there a law that might apply to us?
Yes, it's customizable, it's a package deal, you could actually just roll the whole thing out as-is, but it's customizable, we can customize it directly to ourselves, and we will be working with HR to make sure that our policies, town policies that apply to officers are also in compliance and work together well.
Yeah, and just add a little bit more, SIRS, offset some of the cost of Lexipols, SIRS actually encourages police departments to go this way. It's great to standardize, you know, because again, there's so many civil litigations and things that can go wrong with the PD, so when you have a really good policy and procedures manual, it's a, you know, that's why SIRS helps pay for it a lot of the time.
Things can change rapidly sometimes, so, yeah.
They can, and so I know there's a lot of.
When you said it was out of California, I thought, no, okay, I assumed it would be customized.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Regarding the training, is that something that we encourage or require employees to go to?
This is, well.
Is that something they can choose to go to?
It's part of, it's pick and choose, but more, it's more we assign, so we find training in areas that we need officers to be, increase their skill sets in, and we send them to that training.
Okay.
So, that's, yeah.
I think it's good, I just wanted to know if it's something that they choose, or we're encouraging them to continue advancing their, their strong training and skills?
Yes.
Okay. I think it applies to maybe training, but I've asked this before, where are we in terms of health and fitness for our officers?
That is part of a program that's currently being, there's two facts to that, I'm sure. One is the mental health, and we work with our provider with that in reference to health benefits.
Like minds and associates?
Minds and associates, they'll provide that, but they, also, in conjunction, we have the ability to go out to outside resources if somebody needs some emotional help after, mainly after a stressful call, you know, child death, any other calls that have a negative impact, they're able to do that. We're also working with, Sergeant Lopez is working with a program to promote physical fitness within the department, and we're in contact with the godfather of what they call LawFit, and, which is a program used by. the godfather of what they call Law Fit, um, and, uh, which is a, a program used by, I think, uh, Weld County at this time and several others, and it's, it's norm for, uh, police departments.
Who's the godfather?
Yeah.
I can't tell you his name.
Oh.
I'll get you his name.
I didn't know if that was part of the title of the program.
No, no, no. It's, it's Law Fit. It's called Law Fit, so that's the program, and this gentleman is one that basically pioneered the program.
So are you gonna look like Dwayne Johnson next year when you?
He's already. I'm at the tailor's of uniforms. I'm at the, I'm ordering some schmediums. So.
Question Chief on this, sorry, I, um, because I'm looking at the capital budget that they referenced on page eight thirty-seven, and, and obviously the categories are a little more broad, and I'm, and I'm sure all of these items you've listed tag in, in, in somewhere, uh, within these categories. I'm just curious only because, uh, in middle there's reference to a principal expense for a lease purchase of a hundred and forty-five thousand, which has been there for the last number of years, so.
That's for the building?
Oh, they're lease purchasing the, okay.
So the, yeah, the Windsor Building Authority, right, Dean?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's with the, it's a loan with the USDA. And we, that, that one forty-five eighty number appears in two places, in the capital and back here in the, uh, the, uh, what you call it, the general fund. The reason it's in two places is, one of the things we did for this year was we wanted to make extra payments on that loan, it's a forty-year loan. Uh, I think we are in the tenth year of it, I want to say, and we wanted to try and accelerate that, the payments on that.
And then right next to, right beneath that, it says fleet capital, fleet capital contribution, which, which you did mention here, I don't think.
No, that is part of the, the fleet program, uh, for, um, patrol cars.
So that was, I think, when, uh, Terry covered that, he covered fleet as far as the number of vehicles requested, and the PD was just a part of that.
Those are charges that come from the fleet fund?
Yeah.
But they're being allocated proportionally into each department's budget.
And on this, this, that's true, that's the operations side of it. Well, you're looking at, at two forty-four there, what we've been doing as a, as a matter of operation is, when we get new cars that are not currently in the fleet, you know, be it from the police fund, the, uh, water fund, the sewer fund, we make a one-time capital contribution to the fleet fund to buy the new vehicles. And then after that, we do what, what Paul mentioned there as far as, uh, the annual maintenance and replacement we run, uh, by allocations to the various funds.
So this does relate to new fleet vehicles?
Yes, that would be, that, uh, the addition there, uh, would be for four new, uh, equipped, uh, vehicles.
Okay.
And the adverse is also true that when we sell vehicles.
It goes back to the fleet.
It goes back to the fleet fund as well?
Yes.
In, in the actual police department expenditure budget, um, there's a line item for merit pay. So I just need clarification, I thought because we had moved to the step program, that our police officers aren't part of that.
It's not, that's actually, it's just been, I, I like.
No, this, this does include the five percent officers and sergeant's step plan increase, so it, it, this includes the, that for the sergeants and officers.
For the plan that we're already under, not the rest of the plan, like everybody, okay?
Yes, ma'am. Well, yeah, but that's just for officers and sergeants, and so I think there's also an allotment for, like, um, our lieutenants, our non-shielded folks in there, so it's a blend. A, a lot of it is the, um, step plan, and then there's also an allowance in there for, uh, like, chief and lieutenants and the office staff that are not part of the step program.
All the non-sworn personnel.
Okay.
Chief, I guess, you know, when I looked at it, looking year over year from eighteen, it's, uh, about a twenty-seven percent increase, which.
Yes, sir.
Is significant for sure, but then I kind of ran a number to look at the police department as a percentage of total general fund spending over the last five years, and it really has been fairly stable, and in fact, you guys got less. A few years ago, so it looks like you're really recovering from that.
You know, when the recession hit, uh, you know, everybody in the town went into a, uh, a stagnant or, you know, safe, uh, place and, uh, which was the right thing to do. Um, but growth hasn't stopped, and, uh, our, uh, issues in the area haven't stopped growing, so it's, we're kind of in playing catch-up, so I think we're relatively close to where we need to be, uh, for future, given any stark changes in, um, additional people to community.
I guess my only concern, and I've, I've voiced it to Dean as well, is just, it's a significant commitment, it's a significant addition, and I have no problem understanding the community's growing and you, you, you need that. But it's creating an obligation for the town, and a, a long-term obligation, really, we'd hope, of course, all these people will stay with us for, for their careers. And, and if we stretch it out over a period of time, I, I would just hate to see us expand to a point where if an economic downturn occurs two years from now, um, we have to reduce staff, because it's just always, always hard, that's difficult.
It is a very difficult position to be in, and I, you know, I don't know what the, the true answer is, I mean, uh, uh, we're always, uh, behind where we should be, or do you try to get ahead? So it's, uh, and, again, I'll defer to you because that is, that is the unfortunate fact, it's something that you as a board have to, uh, determine, what that, what that, uh, that's, that spot is, yeah.
Just, just a comment about that, um, I first came on the board two and a half years ago, I talked to our previous, uh, chief about staffing, and I read some stuff online, uh, FBI stats. At that time, our population, by ratio, we should have had fifty-four officers. And as they explained to me then, we're not necessarily a suburb of a large metropolitan area that has a different type of situations than we do, so there's some adjustment in there. But I don't see us ever going, uh, I, I understand what you're asking about, I don't really see that happening, even if our population declined a little bit, which probably isn't going to happen. We're still pretty lean, I think, in terms of, uh, what's recommended for communities of our size, and especially the crossroads where we are. It's not just the people in our community, uh, we have people from region passing through our community, and sometimes creating some situations too, so. I appreciate that question, because that's a concern we have with what happens when becoming, but I think we're going to be pretty safe with, uh, not being overstaffed.
Yeah, that, those numbers, FBI numbers, they change as you grow, and so the smaller you are, the higher the number is, so the numbers stay relatively the same as far as percentage wise go.
If you're a suburb of a large city, it's a little different situation, what we do.
Yeah, and, or, but, we were impacted by the growth of, uh, not only Weld County and Laramie County, but Fort Collins, Greeley, Loveland, uh, Timnuth, Severance, so. All that growth is, is, uh, passed through traffic in a lot of ways, so, um, a lot of times there, uh, incidents do flow into our jurisdiction. I worry our questions.
And then I think we're ready to move on to, uh, engineering.
Chief Board, Mayor, um, engineering. As far as the, with the town's strategic plan, this engineering provides support for, um, priorities number one and two, uh, roads, traffic, and water, and of course, other things, but those are two specific priorities that I, um, picked out. We provided quite a bit of support on. As far as personnel changes, we don't tend to add any personnel in twenty nineteen. Uh, we added two people this year as a result of the town board's priorities, and those two people are water resource manager and a, um, stormwater program coordinator. These people are on staff, they were la- uh, hired here in the latter part of half of twenty eighteen, and they're, uh, working on their programs, and, um, our program, our stormwater program coordinator was, has not been on more than a month here, so. Just as a note, their twenty nineteen salaries, uh, will be paid out of the water in the storm drainage funds, so not the general fund. Um, something to, looking in, forward to in, uh, twenty nineteen is, uh, by July first, twenty nineteen, our, uh, stormwater quality regulations, as required by the state, will go into effect. And that's, uh, one of the main things our stormwater program coordinator is working on now. And I want to call your attention to line items, line item zero eight dash forty-four dash six two one seven is in the storm drainage fund. Uh, there's one thousand fifty-three dollars for the state's MS four permit, uh, but there's also currently two thousand five hundred dollars in there for public education, but after we brought the stormwater program coordinator on board, talking to her, um, we feel like we need to increase that to five thousand. We don't, we don't think that twenty-five hundred is enough to do the proper public education for the, uh, stormwater regs that are going to go into effect.
So, so just for the forezification, so we're talking about things like, um, recently in your, in your water bill, you should have had something that talked about phosphorus, like algae blooms, and just kind of watching when you put your fertilizer along, you don't overspread. I think it's like these kinds of campaigns, right, Dennis, just kind of really let, educating the public, letting them know, you know, um, because we've never really had to do that before.
Where does the water education plan fall into place? So the board, two or three months ago, we saw some water, um, numbers and analysis that led us to believe about, um, what we might have to do in the future in terms of water rate. And I know the board talked about, before we implemented that, that it was very important to have a strong communication campaign set up with the right kind of messaging, um, that we could start delivering, and so that when we have to make that announcement about whatever that's going to be, um, folks hopefully have some understanding. And I think this board wanted to be very involved in that conversation, um, at least wanted to see what the messaging was, to make sure it fell, because I, I heard from lots of different folks around that table that I think the messaging was going to be very important. So is that part of this, or is that somewhere else?
It, it would be somewhere else, and I know that finance and communications have a meeting, um, so do you want to give the mayor a quick update?
Yeah, we, we started that, um, like Shane said, with the communications, myself, and now recently with Dennis and our, our water manager, our water resource manager. We are also related to that, we, we are updating that study that we did a couple of years ago, the one you're talking about. We have the data that we used in that original one, went up through April twenty seventeen, and I, I felt that enough has transpired here in the town as far as building and that kind of thing between, uh, April twenty seventeen and now that we can do a quick update of that study. We met last Tuesday, I, I guess it doesn't matter, and supplied the, uh, consultant with the updated information. We are planning to have something to you in December, and then we can, we started working on the plan, but we, we do not yet know what the exact numbers will be. But we have, we do have a plan.
But my concern is that that's going to be a little too late, because we had looked at about six months ago, that we were going to have to make things take effect starting January one, was my understanding, and I think for the most part, we generally agreed we were going to make that change, based if we'd had the right communications in place to our community prior to that. So whatever the plan is or communication, I don't know if that's the same thing that we were thinking, because what we saw, this is based on something we saw not years ago, but I was going to say, it seems like it was in the last six months.
I was, I was wrong on that, it was, it was in the last six months.
Okay, but, and I just want to make sure that whatever it is that you and communications are planning to do, or whoever, it comes back to the town board. So that, I think the board needs to have that, because the board was very sensitive, and I heard, I heard very strongly, um, wanting to make sure that the right kind of messaging was going to be, um, relayed. So I want, I think that they would want to see that and have an opportunity to give ad additional input or suggestions. But now I'm also wondering, I don't know if December, I mean, if our plan is still to do something in January, we need to start seeing messaging like now so that we can get something out in November, maybe December, so that if we are going to be doing something with our rates come January one, there's some messaging that has occurred prior to that.
So we've been having these conversations, because we know that was a priority of the board, and so part what we're going to do right now, and we can share that with you, is just general education to the public about why water is important. We also need to talk about storm water, we need to talk about MS four, so ju- before, it's kind of a chicken and an egg, we also don't know what the plan is for the water rates. And so what, what we're trying to do right now is just communicate about the importance of water. So we can share with you probably soon about what we're going to put out messaging-wise, about general water education, because we still don't know what the plan is for water rate increases.
Yeah, I'd like all that to be run before the board, and for the board to kind of, because it was the board's suggestion that there be this communication plan, so I think it needs to kind of come back to the board to make sure it is what they were thinking, they wanted to communicate, and it has all the important elements to it. It sounds like that's on track, but I, again, I think we want to see it.
Yep, we'll get that together for you, thank you.
And I'm going to add to that, um, actually what the mayor said, uh, also, I, I, we need, don't need to get into the weeds a whole lot, the public need to understand what a unit of water is, and what it costs today's money. They need to see some numbers, to start getting the idea of just how expensive water is.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on, next slide, the sewer system master plan update. Uh, I'm proposing to add thirty thousand dollars to the twenty nineteen budget to study potential for amending our, uh, master sewer plan, to, uh, study whether, uh, we can, and I think I maybe blow up this, well, maybe you can see the map here. This red line here, we call that, uh, the southwest interceptor, it's the southwest part of town, south of the river. Our current master plan calls for this line to be extended over time, pretty much parallel with the Pooter River, south of the Pooter River. And then when it gets over to County Road thirteen, turn and go north, uh, across the river, through this area here, across the highway, and up into this area to service, um, this part of our growth management area. West of thirteen is not in our growth management area, so we're just talking about the railroad track right here at the diagonal in this area south. You can probably just look at that and guess that, uh, that's pretty expensive to get from, say, this point up in here to service this, because you're going across a river, uh, floodplain, a highway, an area here that's not going to develop because it's a water storage reservoir, of course, the Kiger reservoir is right here, it, it's not going to develop. So you've got a lot of expense to get sewer from here, up here to where you can start using it. I'd like to look at these blue lines here as alternative ways to service this area. Basically, your existing, uh, windshare subdivisions, uh, Jacoby Farm right here, and then, um, existing sewer down here. Possibly, I'm thinking we could, uh, with some extensions represented by these blue lines, we could service those areas, uh, provide service to them for growth and not have this expense of this line here, right? We've seen some development proposals over the last few years come to us, and they say, well, where do we get sewer? And we explain to them, well, it's clear down here right now, uh, you've got to wait till it gets up here, and then you're just going to cross here, and of course, that's economically not feasible. So that's what I would propose to do next year, otherwise I think this area will probably sit undeveloped, uh, for, uh, maybe for as long as, uh, we can see out in the future, so that's that proposal. And I believe that's my last slide.
What is that currently zoned along there for?
Uh, this, this is all residential. This is most, this is, uh, mostly floodplain, floodway, uh, we're waiting for the new FEMA Pooter River flood maps to be finalized. The preliminary ones indicate that this corner, uh, will be developable, of course, that would be commercial, but, um, but most of it's residential. Of course, that would be commercial, but, but most of it's residential.
Where does that, I mean, have we ever looked at, or have we started to look at, now that I think we kind of have made a conscious decision about our growth, not potentially taking the full growth that we've all been presented with, but taking a, the approach of that, that other number that we're looking at? Have we looked at like where that, where, and what that means into the growth? I mean, because is this an area that we don't care about anymore, maybe potentially, based on the fact that we know now our growth is headed at a certain number, and we know it's going to be more in some other pockets or areas?
Right, that is a good question, Your Honor. You know, staff is starting to work on that, it's just it's a pretty slow process really to go and start coupling with zoning overlays and where growth can go and our, you know, all these different build-out numbers. So I would say it's slowly underway that, that we're doing that. And I think it's a good question to ask on whether or not we ever really need this area to develop. You know, it's fair, so.
I mean, I don't know. I mean, but, but we have made some, I think, some changes in our thoughts right now. And it's no longer, we want to expand out to the fullest potential we have. I think we've all said, no, what's right for us is this particular number and to take advantage of all the, you know, I don't know, the most opportune areas possible. And so I don't know where this aligns with that thinking.
Isn't the, isn't the Thornton big pipe supposed to go right down thirteen, right where you're drawing it?
It is.
Maybe we can use their water line for a sewer. It's just going to be a big ditch. Are you allowed to put those two lines in the same hole?
They require a minimum of ten feet distance between sewer and water.
Boy, that's going to be a mess.
It's also, I might add that, well, County Road thirteen is also the preferred route for the NISP pipeline to our southern neighbors. Thirteen just is a very logical corridor for things like that.
Well, they're running the same issues you've identified in terms of floodplain and crossing roads, river.
The difference being, City of Thornton is serving thousands of people, so they spread that over the thousands. So, you know, that, they, that kind of thing doesn't negatively or prohibit that kind of pipeline route.
Yes, especially for the distance, that you think in any preferred route, you're going to have challenges like this, so.
Yeah, that, with that distance. I guess one quick question, and it's not so much a question, you know, I'm looking at the, your total general fund budget is slightly increased over last year, but not, not, you know, by a, by a huge number. And certainly in your earlier slide, you were addressing the priorities for your department. And number one was roads and traffic. But it's hard for me to see where in this budget roads and traffic is being addressed. I'm curious if, if, if there is a more detailed layout of what you plan on doing during it to address number one, the roads and traffic in particular. You know, the things we've always talked about, Seven going into Main, County Road five in Main, and thirty, three ninety-two, and then of course, a method to get truck traffic off of Main Street in the downtown corridor. Is that somewhere buried in your contract services?
Those, those items are capital, your capital project budget, not the general fund operations budget.
Try, try page eight thirty-eight, David.
Okay.
That's, that's where we have the, the street section, the street portion that we're talking about. Is it paid out in capital?
Is that true even if it's a consultant doing an analysis? Do we put that in capital?
If it's a, if it's a new project, we include that in the project cost.
Okay.
We, we don't have a lot of consultants on our, our annual maintenance stuff. But if we, just as our, our rule, if we, if we're doing roadwork, we pay for it out of the capital improvement fund.
So, I'm sorry, so is that, Dean, is that buried in streets on page thirty-eight?
It is what buried?
The work that would be done on Seventh and Main and three ninety-two and County Road five?
Yeah, that's included, that's included, if you look down at a, it's near the bottom, eight four four five. Those numbers there, there's one with a zero, zero project code. That includes County Road thirteen and fifteen, County Road five and Tarmigan. There's a, a whole list of projects included in that one point three million there.
Yeah, we have the oversized Harmony Road between thirteen and fifteen. We have County Road five and Tarmigan fourth. We have Main Street bulbouts, we have pedestrian crossings. We have Seventh Street Main turn lanes and Main Street sidewalk at East of Jimmy Park.
You're looking at capital budget detail?
Yes, sir, for the street.
So I guess I go back to kind of, you and I have talked, and my, my thinking about trying to get truck traffic off of Main Street and the core Main corridor, I never, you know, I'm new, right? But I keep hearing from people, we've talked about this for twenty years. So where is it? Is that a project we will start undertaking next year? At least in terms of studying and?
Right, but I, I don't know that that's a singular project. I think it's comparative, like the crossroads, which we're going to give more an update on, on kind of the, the wisdom behind doing the crossroads project and, and what staff thinks that's going to do, you know, giving folks in east-west corridor in between thirty-four and three ninety-two. So I, I guess I don't look at the truck traffic as being a singular project. I look at it as being a multitude of efforts to, to affect that result. You know, I, I don't know if there's like one thing we could do to say trucks aren't on three ninety-two. Does that make sense?
I, I, yes, I, I guess certainly it's going to involve, what do you do with two fifty-seven? What do you do with three ninety-two? Maybe it involves the extension of crossroads, maybe not. If it doesn't, what does it involve? But certainly if we don't start putting stuff down and studying it, we'll be here, what's my term, four years?
Four years.
We'll be here four years from now, saying, well, how's it going? Anyway, I, I just hope we focus on that somewhere.
Yeah.
I've not seen.
I noticed that in the two nineteen capital outline, we have a hundred and fifty thousand for transportation master plan. Is that going to address some of the questions that David's bringing up? Because I have the same questions.
Right, I, I think it's, and this is Scott Ball said, presented on the master plan. I think it's something that the board had discussed quite extensively when we did the capital improvement plan question. So it, to answer, yeah, it's going to take a holistic look at all of our priorities, as far as road improvements, you know, where people go, what our residents think is important as far as what their top concerns are. So yes and no, it's not going to singularly focus on truck traffic, but I think it's going to look at, at that as well as many other issues.
Along those same lines, how will that be different than what we did last year or earlier this year with our roadway improvement plan?
Well, I, I think that this, one of the big changes here is it's going to incorporate a lot more of the residents and resident feedback. It's going to be a lot more of a, of a master planning, that it's engaged our residents and it really kind of given, I guess, the town a little bit more direction on things that our residents really think is important. Probably as a group, we can say, well, we know people care about County Road five, we know they care about three ninety-two, and it, it just kind of puts it on paper and I think helps us focus on those as well.
This might be a little beyond our budget talk right now, but County Road five, turn lanes. The MPO has asked, has a call for proposals for projects by December of this year. Where are we? Let me back up. In two thousand eighteen, we paid for a study regarding turn lanes at County Road five and three ninety-two. And then nineteen capital improvement budget, we have money for design. And then there was money in the twenty twenty projected for actual construction. So is that the type of thing that the MPO could look at?
Oh, that is a project that you could apply for. Those funds that they currently have the call for projects out for is fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. So I, I look at that and say, well, that, that's a little farther out than I think this board wants to look at that particular project. I think Shane, have you mentioned the County Road thirteen?
I, I did.
So when we talked about, well, what, what is a project that could maybe be out a few years, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three? I think that County Road thirteen popped up as that type of project.
So probably nothing we can get help with in the next two years, probably.
Yeah, not, we're still talking with CDOT about the three ninety-two at County Road five, turn lanes and lanes. It's a slow process. They, for one thing, and I'm not sure how this all played out, but not long after we finished our study of traffic, that study that you referenced, and I shared it with CDOT, they told me, well, headquarters in Denver have also been looking at this intersection. Not sure if it just happened to be coincidence, parallel look at it, or something else prompted them to do that. But trying to find out from them, well, what, what did the, what did you guys conclude out of it? What are you willing to do? What kind of money are you willing to bring to the table? That's, that's fairly difficult, probably time-consuming to get them to step up and communicate that. So we're, we continue to work on that. And that particular study that you referenced too, one of the staff people at the Greeley office went through there and redlined it with comments. And I need to make contact with FHA, the firm that did the study, and ask them to reply or comment on those comments, because it sounds like CDOT isn't going to move off of, allow us to move forward on this project until we've addressed that staff comment, those staff comments. So it's a fairly long road to get there. It's not, if it was just our road and we said, we're going to go out and build this, we build it. But it's a state highway.
Well, and I, and I just want to make a comment. I understand why we don't want to maybe delay a project till twenty-two, twenty-three. But the one thing I have seen time and time again, and we need to be aware of on this call for projects, that many times projects in the current queue, if they're not ready to go, then they look for, other projects can get moved up the line if, because they're looking for projects that are shovel-ready, that have already gone through their design or all of their other phases of testing that need to be done. And so, I mean, even if there's an opportunity for something, I'd rather have something in line. I mean, because there may be the opportunity that somebody else who's already got monies for nineteen and twenty, that might not be able to pull the trigger when it really comes. And then they would look farther down the line, and potentially projects down the road could get moved up.
Yeah, we would have to be in the tip to do that, though. And, and so you'd have to apply for this call for projects and be awarded
Right.
priority in the tip, which of course this project is not in the tip at all right now. It's, it's just a concept that we have here. It's in our plan, but not, not the tip.
If I understand what you were saying, Dean was saying that if we were to hire a consultant or someone who could help expedite this, and, because I appreciate this, CDOT's got an army of people throwing questions at you, one guy. But if we were to hire a consultant or someone to help in pulling all this together, that would be in our capital budget, because it relates to a, ultimately, a capital project?
Yeah, I think that's, that's where I would be inclined to do it, to put in.
And we do have a, we are going to contract with a traffic engineer next year. That, that is in this budget. And I think that it was put under planning, capital under planning. Is that right? Or was it capital initially was there?
You mean to design these lanes?
No, just, just a general kind of on-call traffic engineer.
Yeah, my plan is to get with FHA in the next week or so. In fact, I put a phone call into him last week, and he wasn't there, to address comments from his study. So I kind of look at his study as not being complete yet until CDOT buys into it and says, okay, we've exhausted all the questions, and it's a bona fide study that we accept.
Well, I'm sorry, Doctor.
Dennis, I see CDOT put up a pole at the top of the hill of three ninety-two about a month ago. I wonder if there's a camera on top?
I would guess that's a camera, yeah. I would guess that's a camera. Try the camera.
Do you have an idea what that's for? Does it involve that stretch of road, the traffic situation, or?
Well, they've put a lot of cameras up around the state, and if you get on their website, you can see real-time traffic. So by looks of it, it's a permanent pole. It's not just a temporary pole to study traffic movements, you know, figure out what's the solution. For some reason, they feel like that's a strategic location apparently to look at traffic movement on three ninety-two.
Probably because it's always backed up right there. They don't, they don't have a way to remotely control the light at, at Fairgrounds in three ninety-two, do they?
I, I don't know.
You know, like if they're, if they could see from their camera that there was a backup, that they could allow, you know?
I think their signals are, they, they do have transmit data back to their office in Greeley. But what they can do from there, I'm not sure.
And if they don't look at the north-south traffic on five, it would be pointless, because that's backing up down the hill to thirty-two.
Yeah, if you start giving more green time to three ninety-two, you're just going to back traffic farther up on five. So you can only do so much in a given period of time.
To Mr. Soloski's point earlier, transportation's a big issue in our community. And so I want to make certain that we're being aggressive in how we're approaching that. And I know we always have to do another study someplace, but I want to make certain we're putting our money where our mouth is and we're being aggressive in addressing some of these community needs on transportation. Like County Road five probably needs to be coordinated with Lerner County. So there's a lot of pieces like this, I appreciate that. So again, we need to be aggressive with that and be willing to put money into it if needed.
Yeah, just, just to clarify, this, three ninety-two, those are lanes on three ninety-two, not five. You're going to have an item on your regular town board agenda coming up later about County Road five and the proposed Tarmigan fourth filing. But really, two different things, whether to add lanes at three ninety-two and how we're widening five, so that's, that's another.
And so that needs to be coordinated between a developer, the town, CDOT, Lerner County.
And residents.
Again, if we need help to do that, we need to push that aggressively.
And I guess my, my point on that, if, if in fact that helped, whether it's in the form of a consultant or, or a retired CDOT person, someone who can help us move this stuff, and if it falls under capital, the, the initial capital budget we're looking at, of course, has four point one million per dime value, which we know is not going to be there. Do we have funds available to really help drive these projects? Because my feeling, my worry is they will languish, because there's no, because we just don't have the resources to really drive them or the, the right people to drive them.
Right, so we, we, this budget does include just kind of a generic bringing on a traffic engineer and contracting with a traffic engineer. So, so that is reflected in this budget. And then secondly, per the board's direction at the last meeting, this budget now has a one million dollar line item for, for transportation issues. I can't remember what we called it, but for transportation. So yes, sir, I would say that there are, there is money built into this budget for, for transportation, anything that came up next year.
If you put the four point one million in a small unmarked bills in a brown envelope and to CDOT.
That's for, that's for, that's for Park Improvement Fund. So, so actually that four point one doesn't put anything back into the, into the streets capital.
You've tried it before. It didn't work.
Okay, Dennis, I think your ten minutes is about up.
Okay, economic developments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Town Board. God, I feel like I really should have asked for more stuff or something. Lines can be pretty boring and straightforward, I think. So this year, the strategic plan, one item really sort of, kind of, maybe relates to what I should be doing, I guess. The downtown research, what businesses might be in a target at a population of about sixty thousand. I know in previous years, I think I came in on about four of the strategic plan items. So it's nice to not have so much connection. But I think we'll continue down our, our road that we always focus on from, from economic development standpoint, which includes all aspects of the town. Citizen survey, how it relates to that. Citizen survey, how it relates to that overall economic health. They still seem to have a presence and a request for retail and job creation. Twenty-nineteen, there are no staff requests. Do want to focus on retail placemaking and business park build-out. That is line item sixty-two fifty-three, the only bump in my budget that was controlled by, I guess, my office, trying to bump it up. And that is for contract services to hire someone to help do that. So when we talked about that, that is really the trend and the shift in, in creating places for retail that want to land there. So we haven't identified specific parks yet, but East Point would be a great point for that, Brands East, the downtown, any areas that we would want some specific retail activity, and as well as creating that environment to where businesses come to us. So it's not a, a creation of Stacy just one-off and doing all these one-off phone calls to everybody trying to get them here. It's really creating these environments, which is the trend that we're seeing, that businesses want to be there. I just actually got back from Commercial Real Estate for Women Conference out in San, San Diego this past week, and we went, I went to the UTC, and, and that is a huge mall out there. They redesigned and redeveloped it into a placemaking space for gathering spaces, outdoor greenery connectivity. They got forty-six new companies in that mall that had never been in the, in the San Diego market before. So forty-six different brands and stuff had come to that mall with that redevelopment in that area that had never even been in that town before. So I found that very, very fascinating, that their placemaking and what they did in the integration of office, and there was a commercial, CBRE has their commercial office in that location as well. So I think there's definitely some opportunity there for us to start investigating how we want to develop our retail areas and what we can draw to those. Trends, low unemployment rates continue to be an issue for all of our employers. We obviously witness it here, trying to get enough applicants in for our jobs and positions and staying competitive. We are working, Jill and I just met with Laramie County Economic Development Team today, really pleased with their efforts and conversion over to a business, more business and talent-focused office, rather than just one-off and finding one person a job. They're actually working with businesses and talent trends and focusing on businesses and the successful transition for talent acquisition within Laramie County and Weld. They will come help us in Weld, too. And we do have Employment Services of Weld County as well. So really, that's it for my budget. I don't have, everything else will still continue down the path of focusing on primary employment, that's attracting and retaining, retail attracting and retaining, and then the business ombudsman. So does anybody have any questions?
The incentive fund, what do you keep on hand for years? Is that two-hundred thousand, is that correct?
Correct.
And so you're just supplementing?
Yeah.
What, what you need to hit two-hundred thousand, is your correct?
That is correct, what we anticipate, yeah. The, the transfer of, of the fund, Economic Development Center Fund, we are anticipating that Conna Hotel Group will come in this year, and that's the chunk of change that you see for that, which is that fifty-four thousand. If they do not get their CO and do not get that this year, then it would come out of next year. So far, for next year, we have Da Vinci Signs at forty thousand, and then there's eighty-five-hundred for Colorado Cherry Company for next year. But yeah, that's just to keep the fund whole. That was the decision that was made by the town board a couple of years ago. It's really up to your discretion of whether you continue to do that or not, but usually that's what we've started off fresh every year, is the two-hundred thousand dollars fund for that.
Stacy.
What's, um, contract service? In twenty-seventeen, it was eleven thousand. In twenty-eighteen, it's twelve thousand. It's projected to basically come in at twelve thousand, but next, next year, you're budgeting forty-nine thousand dollars.
Right, so that's to hire a retail consultant or someone who's familiar with the, the business park and the retail placemaking? So someone who needs to come in and align and see which places that we need to do that with? How do you get planning engaged? Because it's not just economic development. So it's the planning department with zoning and corrections, it's economic development, it's, you know, identifying those. So it's really hiring someone that has a specialization in that, because it's not me, that can create those placemakers and see where we have those opportunities within the town. You know, is it the ballpark? Is it East Point? Is it downtown? Is it Brands East? I don't know where our best opportunity is to create those places, to designate attracting retail there based off of zoning and requirements, and/or maybe there's specific incentives that they want to do at those particular places to attract retail to come to those.
And we currently use to do that kind of, or that we're already, that we've already been paying some money to?
Well, the contract services that we've done in the past that, that are in regards to retail specifically was KP and Associates. So it was Katie Press.
Will this person have contacts with developers? Because it's great to have all this stuff, but we need to find developers that want to come in and buy that land or, and have the contacts with those retailers.
Right, I would actually probably stress that person needs to have contacts with the real estate community and the brokerage community that actually goes out on behalf of those retailers and actually does the place location or, or find, you know, the, the actual decision-making process to help those companies identify the place. So we have the developers, those parks are just, that's why we haven't spent all of our money on staff development going to the ICSC, because those parks haven't been developed. So Brands East is fantastic. Now we've got stuff coming out of the ground. Now I can go to ICSC and sell it if we need to in the spring. But I didn't have any buildings to sell. All I had was dirt and the idea and the concept of it. And even retailers in today's market or five years ago are not going to go land somewhere where there's just dirt and no other retailers. That's just not going to happen. So now it's how do we create that environment that even makes it more likely for retailers to come there on top of everything else? We're starting to get there. There's stuff starting to come out of the ground at Brands with Fuzzies. There's stuff starting to come out of the ground at East Point with the Come and Go, with Doug's Day Diner going in that first retail building. But there isn't really a whole identified design or a, a place that specifically focuses on that. So there are developers that are doing it, that own the land that are doing it, even though some of it's at a slower pace than we may like, but we really need to focus on someone who has the connections with the brokerage community that can actually get their attention and say, hey, what about these different parks in this community? Consider locating here. So I know there's.
Are we still waiting, Katie, for us to come back with anything more for us or anything? No? Okay, I just wasn't sure.
No, this was her idea at the last meeting. So this is what we're taking the lead off of.
Okay.
When she came in and talked to us about, you know, instead of just trying to one-off and, and shoot off and trying to go and have me cold-calling everybody, you know, we really, the, the transition in retail as a whole nationwide is to create these senses, sense of places where people are actually, the retailers are locating and the people want to go, and it's in an integration of living there, office space, you know, working there. So.
Thank you.
Anything else for economic development? I think we're ready to move on to town clerk.
Thank you.
Ms. Eifer.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Board. So Kelly Houding and I will both be presenting on the Town Clerk Customer Service Budget, but I'll be speaking to some elements that relate directly to the Town Clerk's office. The Town Clerk's office serves as an internal function to support all departments and to support the town's mission. Some changes in two thousand nineteen include the addition of funds for a potential election. There's not an election scheduled for two thousand nineteen, but there's a best practice to include those funds in case the need arises for that. There is a decrease in the dues and fees and telephone services due to the previous town clerk also being the assistant to the town manager. She was involved in more professional organizations, and now the clerk's office is focusing solely on town clerk functions. There is an increase in travel and mileage for in-state training purposes and for daily runs to our personal. Do you have any questions?
I guess only that, the chart on A three, I mean, it looks like you have an increase of thirty-five, a decrease of six-eight-six, an increase of four-fifty, and a decrease of eight-forty, which sounds like on a net basis, it should be going down. But if I look at eighteen to nineteen, it goes from one-fourteen to one-seven-six. I have prepared the line items.
So, so one, if you look at the IT, the tech transfer, there's a, there's probably sixty thousand dollars right there for just that internal service fund.
Yeah.
That's a big one.
That's really the big one.
Yes, sir.
I mean, that's the difference.
And that's due to some new software in the court system and a records management system.
Thank you.
It looks like in the odd years, we haven't been really setting money outside for elections. Is that something new that you wanted to do?
Yes, it is, yeah.
Like Crystal said, it, it's a best practice, so we know, you know, we may have a one-fifty-two opt-out election, we may not, but we could, or, you know, there's always referendum, there's always reason that we could have an election, and it, it doesn't cost us anything to put it in there.
Makes sense.
I have a question. If the school district or any special district has an election, do we pay for that, or do they, they have to?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Town Board. Eighty-three percent of residents positively rank the town's customer service, and our goal for next year is to maintain and improve that number. Within the Town Clerk and Customer Service Budget, the only change we expect for next year is our current mail machine is operating on an analog system, and it, we need to update that to a digital system. And because of that, we need to purchase a, lease the mail machine because you're not able to buy those because it's federal law, you can't buy a mail machine because it's technically postage and currency. So we'll be leasing that, and then also, because we're switching to a new company, we need to buy a new folding machine to go along with it. And so those are just the changes, and we use that for our utility billing. And then we'll also be doing new staff shirts, so when you come into town hall, it'll have a consistent look of everyone wearing a logoed, um, uniform look, so you'll know where you're at. Those are the only changes. Any questions? Thanks.
Okay, so we're moving on to administration.
Thank you. So just first starting out with the mayor and town board budget. So you'll, you'll note that the wages are going up or from fifty-five thousand to six, or fifty-five thousand to sixty thousand. That's to do the full implementation of ordinance twenty-fifteen dash fourteen ninety-seven. We have under PR, we're asking for twenty-five thousand dollars to start a town-wide newsletter. That's something that I know that the mayor's been working closely with our communications team to really get a message out, I think, just in response to not having a, a daily newspaper, the local newspaper. So a way for the town to, to really communicate with our residents of what's happening. So I think that that's still forming up, but right now, we've just asked for twenty-five thousand dollars to, to implement whatever that ends up looking like. The, the total under PR is forty-two thousand dollars. It's, it's down about fourteen thousand dollars year over year, and I think the reason why it has dropped even with the newsletters because we had our tenth year anniversary for the tornado, so we had, this line item was a little bit higher this year, and so it'll still drop next year. For the board development, that's kind of the standard stuff. It's slightly increased year over year, but that includes the CML conference, all the dinners, CML membership NLC, et cetera. Contract services, so this includes two things, the broadband survey. And so I think when we talked to the board, we said we were going to cost share that with Greeley. We think the total cost will be twenty-five thousand dollars. We put in a bigger number here than, than what our twelve-five share could be, just because we're not exactly sure how much it's going to be, and we're not sure if we're just going to do one survey. The board may say mid-year, hey, look, let's do another survey. So we're asking, we're requesting twenty-five thousand dollars as kind of a placeholder. And then we have our biannual citizen survey, which is seventeen thousand dollars. Again, you'll note a decrease of about thirty-five thousand dollars a year over year, and I believe that this is where we paid the municipal advisor, Mr. Lavanchi, without, when the town didn't have a manager, so that thirty thousand or so that Mr. Lavanchi was paid over that time, was paid out of this. That's why that's also dropping year over year. And then outside agents of funding, so the, the town board has a request, it's actually in your packet, it's on page two of your work session. The Windsor Housing Authority has requested the board contribute ninety-five thousand dollars so it can hire a full-time director with benefits. So right now, how that's reflected in your budget is, the board has the one-and-a-half percent town board fund, that equates this year to just under one-hundred and two thousand dollars. So right now, that, that ninety-five thousand dollars isn't shown in addition to that one-hundred and two thousand, it's just kind of under that line. So I wanted to get direction from the board on whether or not you want to contribute the entire ninety-five thousand, if you wanted to do a part of that. And I think because the board has typically contributed much less than, than you've allowed yourself as a total budget, in the last three years, you'll see that twenty-sixteen, you contributed fifty-seven thousand, last year was fourteen-three hundred, and this year, we've only spent fifteen thousand two hundred so far. So I would argue that there's plenty, there's ample room under that budget for the board to contribute towards this position if you were so inclined, but it's not additionally reflected. So, and then Dr. Jones is on that board, I believe, if you want to add anything.
No, it's just, probably it's a position that's badly needed. I mean, right now, they have to, they manage Century Three, they manage the Meadows, and there'll be a hundred and twenty-three more units coming on board for senior housing. They're also looking at Chestnut Square, or not Chestnut Square, Governor's Farm, which, you know, that adds another forty-eight if that goes through. That's kind of in the air right now. Yeah, I mean, they're under the gun budget-wise because all their rents are pretty much controlled by the government, federal government. They're subsidized rents in all these units, and the government tells them how much they can raise rent. You know, if, if that wasn't an issue and they could, they could bump the rents up, maybe this wouldn't be a factor, but right now, they work, they have contract service through Loveland Housing Authority to help with the administration of everything over here. But it, I, I mean, if it's not this year, I'm sure in the near future, they're going to have to have somebody on-site or in local full-time.
How do they current, they currently have somebody? How do they currently pay that person? And is that person only part-time or who, or?
Right now, the person that's really acts as a director is the chair of the board. He's a volunteer.
No, I think they had a gal who runs.
They have a lady who acts as administrative assistant. She spends half-time at Century Three and half-time at Windsor Meadows. And I had the privilege of being their liaison for two years, and so I kind of got to see the operations and.
But isn't her position paid?
Her position is paid with their present funds. And she's very much, I mean, workload's much bigger than one person. They have a part-time maintenance person, which is a real concern. This last winter, when that person had, was out because of some family illnesses, they really got behind in maintenance on Century Three, which is what, forty or fifty years old? Plus, there's, even with Windsor Meadows, it's only a couple of years old, there's still maintenance issues over there. So there, there's definitely a need for some help there. I would comment, I've seen their situation, and, and there's no question, if, if we want those facilities to be maintained and advanced in Windsor, something's got to happen. You cannot just rely on volunteer help, and the key person's no longer be there after March. Okay, he's been retired, and he's been doing all this stuff, and he's gone. The other board members are all full-time employed somewhere, so you got major housing project based mostly on volunteer time. I would ask them three questions. And one, Dr. Jones already addressed, but one question I think everybody needs to hear the answer to is, why can't they just raise their rates to cover their costs, a business model? And I know the answer to that, but I think they should give us a little more detail on why they can't just run it like a business. Second question I would have for them is, can they give us a little bit more of an outline of what they need to do to become self-sustaining? I spent some time talking to the new director for Loveland Housing Authority, and based on what they did in Loveland and Nestus Park, there's a period of time as their units And based on what they did in Loveland and Nestus Park, there's a period of time as their units grow, they eventually have enough, I'd say profit, but enough margin of income, that they can become self-sustaining. I would like to have the Windsor Housing Authority outline how many more units they have to do, how much land do they have to acquire, what would they have to do? Approximate timeframe, maybe, of what to become self-sustaining.
And in the proposal, I think that they said that they thought they'd be self-sustaining in ten years.
Yeah, I read all that. What I'd like to see though, this is my thoughts, is how many more, does that mean doubling their units? What would they have to do to get the revenue margin needed to become self-sustaining? Third question I have is, are there other sources of income? And what's the possibility in the short term of contract service? I'm thinking about as they start construction, maybe this spring on Golden Meadows and Bill is gone. Who's going to be managing that? So I don't know if there's a short-term solution to help and, and contract service for that. So those are some questions I have, that I think, overall though, I, I really am looking for a way that we can help them somehow.
So this current administrative assistant, is she full-time or part-time? Cause she's paid, that one that, that's paid, that works.
I think she's part-time.
So maybe twenty hours a week?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly.
And are they, is she going to stay on or what is her plan?
I don't think she's going to stay on.
They, they are budgeting to have an administrative assistant full-time. That's one of the costs in the proposal that they said they would cover. So not really knowing the organization like Mr. Bennett or Dr. Jones, I would think that it may be bringing her on full-time and they're just covering her costs or getting her to whatever level to be full-time there.
I think the, the reason having, I, I was talking to the Loveland Housing Authority people to get some background, try to understand what has to happen to become self-sustaining. And they gave me a pretty compelling argument on why you need an executive director. Like I see the name for maintenance right now and administrative assistance, cause you know, customers are calling, they're applying, they have to update their lists, there's, there's all kinds of little gaps there right now. But their compelling argument was that an executive director is the one that's going to work with the real estate market, the economic development market to find additional opportunities to expand their, their inventory, which makes them self-sustaining.
If we have to decide this tonight, you know, what I'd like to do is sit down and get, get Bill, the Chairman, and a couple of folks, the Charlotte, who's I think she's a Charlotte supporter from Loveland and.
Jeff.
Jeff.
Yeah.
And maybe sit down and, and get some of these questions answered before we decide one way or another. Cause we don't, we don't really need to finalize this for a month or so anyway.
Right, well, and, and again, as long as the board is okay with the overall concept that, that whatever's paid to Windsor Housing Authority would come out of the other agency funding, then, then you wouldn't even have to decide it by December. I mean, it could just be adopted in the budget and you could still determine at what level you wanted to fund the Housing Authority after that. So that, that's the only thing that you would need to know prior to us adopting it, cause right now there's no additional money. It's just that one hundred and two thousand dollars for other agency funding, this is theoretically incorporated into that.
But that leaves no money the rest of the year.
Right, if, if. That's right, yeah. If, if the board elected, look, we're going to fund the entire thing as requested, you're right, you would have seven thousand dollars left for the rest of the community.
And so, looking at your bullet points here and then at, at the spreadsheet, on that particular line item, it shows at least projected twenty eighteen at eighty-nine.
Well, i- i- and the reason why we do that is because we don't know if people are going to come in at the end of the year and request money. So, so the amount that I show that you've, you've done so far is actually what we've spent. That, that could stay at the fifteen thousand two hundred. But, but that's just kind of, you know, what we do in budgeting is we say, well, we're not really in control of this. We don't know if the board's going to contribute the rest of this to somebody. We, we max it out as far as what we show in the budget. And then when we go to the end of the year, if we haven't spent the money, when we do the audit, it kind of gets swept back in and our beginning fund balance ended up being higher than we thought, et cetera.
Then just below, there is a line item right below it for Windsor Housing Authority. Showing zero, which just probably means an internal entry if we decide to go forward.
That, that's right, yeah. I just wanted to make sure we had that placemaker on there.
And then the amount outside funding on DDA, is that really theirs?
Yeah, and that, that's the next slide, so.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that, that's all right, you're keeping up with the presentation. So we are on year three of our five-year extension with them. The last year that we will support the DDA by agreement is by twenty twenty-one and that budgeted contribution is three hundred and fifty-seven thousand.
Is this the sales tax here or is it really just a?
Yeah, it's a sales tax.
It's a sales tax.
Okay, next. So any questions on your budget? Anything there? Nope, okay. So eighty-six percent of respondents to our last citizen survey positively ranked most aspects of the government. And as you know, you know, one of my prime responsibilities is oversight of the strategic plan. Make sure that, that the board's vision for the community is, is moving forward. Just a few highlights for your consideration. One is, we will show the wages in twenty nineteen actually going down from what was spent in twenty eighteen. I think that is just buying out. My predecessor kind of inflated the, the wages aspect of the budget this year. That, that wage does include the request for the administrative analyst that I covered under the staff request at an earlier meeting. Employee relations, we're asking for a little increase there and that's basically just to cover the end-of-year banquet. We've added more employees and so we just think that that dinner's going to be a little bit more, but we want to make sure that we don't turn people away. Travel and mileage is shown to go down quite a bit. My predecessor had a monthly stipend for, for mileage, so that's the reason that that has gone down. And then the postage request is higher and that's for our annual report, the direct mailer, so that's basically the entire mailer is that increase. And that's, that's my budget, any questions?
Have you not done an annual report mailing before?
Um, I, I think.
We, we have. This, this will be the third year. But I don't know that, we're just now, I think, decided to put it in its own line item.
So, yeah. So, any questions on that? All right, to do a quick capital plan upgrade for you, so we've, we've mentioned it many times that Diamond Valley Field, so we're not going to spend that money, that four point one million went back into the Parks Fund. We also had one million dollars from the Pooter Trail Open Space, Sureview. I think staff had talked to you a few meetings ago about maybe starting a little bit of a savings fund to fund this and the board's reception was kind of lukewarm with that idea, so we, we pulled that out of the capital fund. We had initially thought that our match for the Weld County Tower was going to be two hundred and fifty thousand. That's now one hundred and seventy-five or so. So that seventy-two thousand won't be spent. We also pulled the sewer interceptor on two fifty-seven out of the budget. That was about six point four million. And then things that are, are kind of in there that weren't when you first saw it. One is we're budgeting to build the sidewalk east of Chimney Park. Secondly, we've got the cemetery parking lot that, that Eric spoke to you about at the last meeting, so now that project is reflected in the twenty nineteen budget. And, and the board is going to be getting an update on that design. We are going to come back to you in a workshop and let you see about the parking. And then at the last meeting, the board had directed staff to put in a transportation line item of one million dollars, so that is now reflected there. And then on the revenue standpoint, because the board recently adopted the traffic impact fee, we actually have another, just under three hundred thousand dollars of revenue. So I, I don't want to read these to you guys. I don't even want to go that slow. What I'd like to do is go here to show you the, kind of the overall changes and then we can backtrack, if the board would like to backtrack. So with those things that I just brought to your attention, so of course the Parks, Park Improvement Fund is entirely Diamond Valley's removal. That's why that went down so much. The, the CTF funds are the same for the overall capital improvement fund. It, it's gone up four hundred and fifty-two thousand, but that's again, the, the projects that I just talked to you about a couple of slides ago and I'll go back to those. So we had, we had the Pooter Trail, the Weld County Radio Tower, the Main Street Sidewalk, the Cemetery Parking Lot and the Transportation Line Item. Those are all general fund. So when you, when you subtract those and add those and take those all, the, the net effect is that four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars increase under capital. Does that make sense, Mr.? No. So when we presented in August, we, we presented the original budget and then a few things have changed from that. These are the things that have changed. So when you take the general fund items, so the general fund items are everything but the Diamond Valley Field, cause that's a Parks deal. And then the sewer interceptor, cause that's a sewer fund. Everything else up there is general fund. So the, the net of those changes is four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. Does that make sense? Yes, okay. And then the other big change again is the sewer fund and that was the Harmony Interceptor. So we just subtracted that project out of the sewer fund. So, you know.
We're, we're not following where you're showing this four hundred and fifty thousand.
I, I'm sorry, I just, I just did the math between the capital improvement funds, so what we showed in August, that was a twenty-four million eight hundred thousand and in October is twenty-five million two hundred and fifty-five thousand.
That's the.
I, I, I'm sorry, Mayor. I, I just did that math so you knew the, 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 the total amount, so that was four hundred and fifty-two thousand nine hundred and two dollars. And so that was with the additions and deletions. So I'm sorry, I just threw out that number and confused you folks. So then the other big change is the sewer fund. That's the, the Harmony Interceptor. And so the, the, the net difference between the two budgets is about ten million dollars less. It's in our total capital fund right now. Yep. So Mr. Slazowski's nodding his head. I think that is a great sign.
He's tired.
Yeah. Saving ten million's a good thing.
Right, yeah, well, okay. Any questions, Port? All right, hey, thank you guys so much.
Okay, then we'll conclude our work session and come back in about ten minutes. Or five minutes, it's six fifty-five.